I'm calling the order to order the special meeting for October 7, 2022.
Gracious heavens, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to be here and take care of city business. And we ask you, Lord, that your will be done. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to take act- to both to take action on the consent order.
Um, Jimmy and Dale, I think both wanted to say something about it. Who wants to go first? It looks like it's gonna be Dale. Come on, you got the ball in hold, Turner.
One to the water.
Oh, boy.
I actually don't really have anything specific to discuss. I'm kinda here to help answer questions. And it's kinda what I guess Jimmy's here to. Um, we- I know you're kinda kicking around whether you're gonna do a pay it outright or whether you're gonna try to do an income project. I mean, I can offer a little bit of help on the income project. I got a consent order in another city that just went through and did an income project on successfully. Um, so, I mean, I'm really just here to help answer any questions.
What all can you do on the income project?
So you can do anything that you weren't already planning to do. So if you, you know, you had a sewer project that you wanted to do that you don't already have funding for, you had not already applied for a permit for, that kinda stuff, you could do that to help offset it. What I was kinda thinking about was maybe you could use some equipment. Something that could be used kinda along the lines of helping prevent or take action with, help work through sanitary sewer flood. Uh, like a portable bypass pump, like a jet machine, something like that. The only issue you have here is, you know, you got, I think your consent order amount is 12,750. Jimmy and I were talking about-
Five hundred.
Yeah, five hundred of that is, is a, you're gonna pay that regardless as an added cost. A lot of these, a lot of times these things require one and a half tons of-
This one does.
Amount. This one does?
Eighteen thou.
Okay. I, yeah, you missed that. You told me where it was. Anyway, so you need to spend at least that much money on a project. If you did, if you were to buy a bypass pump, unfortunately, it'd probably cost you closer to forty-five dollars. So it's really how much money you wanna spend. If you think that that's something you wanna buy anyway, and you had the money to buy it, this would be a good opportunity to buy it because you get some credit against this. If you have nothing in mind to purchase like that, um, then you probably just opt in outright and move on.
LED lights or nothing like that or-
You start getting outside the sewer realm, you start getting a little tricky. But certainly, I mean, you're not obligated typically to make that decision as soon as you sign it. You can sign the document now, kick around a couple ideas, pitch those ideas to the state and see what the state was interested in or willing to accept. If they're not gonna take any of them or don't for whatever reason, then you pay the fine then. And so you, you're not, the only thing you really have to take action on fairly quickly right this moment is executing consent order.
Let me have to decide.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have to decide whether we don't pay out through the income.
Not, not right away. There'll, there'll be timelines. And again, I peruse this thing. I haven't read it in depth yet, but there's timelines they set up to-
Why do they say within thirty days?
Right.
No, we have to respond to this by eighteen.
By thirteen, I know by thirteen.
So the income thing means that we get to keep that money basically, right? And, and pay a little bit more, but it's something we can do for the town as opposed to just paying?
Right. Instead of just paying the fine and the money's gone, you, you do a project that you would like to do anyway.
Yeah.
It counts against the fine and you get to keep the project.
Wow. So Jason needs to think of something.
Well, a lot of it's gonna depend on your budget and how much money you can afford to spend. That, that's really-
We would need to keep the program.
The other thing, I don't know how well or how much y'all read this. There are deadlines, paperwork and physical deadlines that have got to be hit. If any one of those deadlines gets missed anywhere along the way, we will have to pay the entire fine, no matter how much we've already invested in the project. We will have to do both if we miss one deadline.
You do, you are allowed to extend deadlines if you have good circumstances. I've had that, successfully done that, but yeah, she, Rose is exactly right. So what happens is the day you sign it and the day it comes back from them, that's when your clock starts. So anything in there that says thirty days after, after that, that's the date that starts when you get it back from them, sign it.
So we go ahead and accept it and then make the decision within thirty days?
Again, assuming there's nothing in here that is inaccurate. I assume there's no argument on, I haven't heard any. So if everything in here is accurate, yes, I would recommend that you both to accept it, sign it, send it to them. They'll send you the doc, the fully executed document back. The clock will start and set up a little timeline to see what's due when and start working on whether you wanna do an income project or just pay and move on.
Jimmy, do you have any idea of what's something that we could get started on to get this right here going? There's nothing up there that's gonna be a twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah, the trade plant, absolutely. But that's the future equipment. Most, uh, and I don't see a bunch of that.
You have to be careful because anything, again, anything you've already got funded or already trying to get funded. So you got two CDVG projects, well, one of them doesn't have much super in it. But the, the CDVG project that we just approved, the disaster recovery that we did when I was here earlier this week, that's got generators. So you couldn't use any of that money to offset this concern. You'd have to buy something outside of that. And then we're also chasing the other CDVG money for all the improvements of the plant. Anything that's in that CDVG, you cannot use that money to offset this.
It's the, uh, painting of the plant and all the pumps, not any of it is.
Have to go back and look. There's a bunch of stuff in it, but, um, yeah. Anything that was outside of that, of the plan. Yeah, well, that's true too. If it's maintenance stuff, you're, you start getting in trouble too. They really want you to spend some money that you weren't planning to spend already. That's just kinda the way it works.
So then we need to go through and see exactly what's in it, right?
Well, yes, ma'am. We all need to figure out if, if there is. The one, the reason I suggested equipment, like a, like a bypass pump or a jet machine or something like that is those are easy. If you alr- if you already think that the city would like to have one, this would be your opportunity to do it because essentially you get some of it paid for because you, you know, you're gonna pay them.
And those are not usually in the plan?
They're not presently in any grant.
That, that'll come close to coming to get the sewer jet.
It'll, um, yes, sir. I, I priced a sewer jet recently, but I know a bypass pump's probably gonna be close to forty grand. So that, you know, that's easily recovered. I would imagine a jet machine would cost twenty, thirty, forty grand too, probably. Then, then the only issue is if you have forty grand and it's, you know, is that can put you in a bind otherwise. Like I said, you don't have to make those decisions tonight. You only really need to make the decision, sign the document and, and start the process.
I talked to Mr. Nucci. You should feel free to call him anytime. He'll answer any question.
Right. Yeah, I've had a conversation with him yesterday myself.
When I can take all them grants, look on that cover sheet, he's gonna tell us everything that's involved in that project.
Absolutely. Then you can start thinking outside of those and then kinda amongst ourselves, figure out what sounds like it might work and then pitch it to him and make sure it's good with him.
Does it have to be something out of the plan or can we use it somewhere in the city?
Well, normally-
For sewer.
Normally it would be a sewer thing, but I mean, I, I think Mayor mentioned LED lights. I think Jimmy said they had done that in Chippie, which is something completely different. But it's worth asking if that's something on my list.
LED lights at the plant, they included them.
There was, there was lighting.
It's one of the grants.
So back to your question, typically it needs to be sewer related, but not necessarily at the plant. It could be anywhere in the system. That's why I like a bypass pump. Could use it anywhere on the back of the truck.
What I was thinking was that, uh, sports leagues in the sewer.
Sewer working.
Because we're, that's, that's one of the problems. And plus we're gonna have to have a line that's gonna have to be poured through to the other side.
I don't know.
That's, uh, very, in my opinion.
Again, come up with some ideas and then pitch it to the state and let them say yes or no. I'm, I'm down. I wouldn't hang my hat off, but.
Yeah, because at the end of the thirty days, if they don't come up with something, then you just pay the fine.
Right, the check and move on, exactly. It really doesn't matter what, really anybody in this room thinks. It matters what the state thinks. So they buy it and then they go and debate it.
Now, the plan, we don't have four, yes, we could now, we now-
But we don't have.
Leave yourself more, like more in mind with eighteen than last project. You don't have to make the decision now.
I know, we know that.
So the vote tonight is just to take action on the plan.
You don't have any disagreement with the findings from the department?
So the woman who submitted in acted it out in the last part.
You don't have any disagreement with the findings of the department, the basis of that?
What did you see in that? Did you see it in there? It's one and a half tons?
That's what he told me.
That's usually what it is.
I, I mean, I know it is, but I can't find it.
I don't remember seeing it either.
It's not in, it's not in this paper.
Well, then it ain't, that ain't, that, it should be in that paper.
Yeah, I, he, I talked to everybody. We can get it on. That's what he said, everybody found it. We can get it in a way.
That is it, what I'm saying. That's the order you're signing. And it doesn't say the income. It says the income is equal money is all I see. Cause the first one I seen like that.
Yeah.
We can steal, we can sell.
So what are you, what are you saying that means?
The income where it's normally one and a half tons.
Right.
I don't find that in this one. I only find income to be twelve thousand, fifteen.
What that means is that you wouldn't pay them one and a half tons if it's not-
In this paper they say it, the income services.
And then, but did you see it where it says one and a half ton?
No, it don't say proceed any. That's just something.
That's the consent order there.
Yeah.
Well, they say on the volume or whatever.
That matters, right?
What matters is what's in here, what's in there.
Yeah.
I went over it three or four times and I couldn't find it because it'll be the first one I've ever seen. It wasn't one and a half ton. You said that that's what I was looking for and I, and I don't remember reading that.
There's not in there.
Again, we worked that out later too, so it's not, but I, I agree.
Yeah, so it's just important to go ahead and sign it, right?
Do I have anything else for Jimmy?
What?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but do we need to let them, we need to let them know that if we want to try to do an income project, we have to tell them that with the response, right? No, just sign it and send it back?
I think you got thirty or sixty days.
Okay.
So we just sign it and send it back and then?
Then they sign it, send it back to you and then the clock starts.
Clock starts.
And then you, then you go through and set up all these things.
I mean, this is legal action that the department is taking against. It's just in an administrative context. It's a regular courtroom. So if we had any basis to disagree with their findings, we would appeal those findings. But Jimmy's not know that it's inaccurate. We don't have a, a basis. But this is a settlement agreement between DEP and the city.
Hey Gary, if you'll look at H on this, next to the last page, it talks about that with a response at times in the, it said the twelve.
Right.
To fifty, then if there's no additional penalty, it shall be assessed under paragraph four. If there is completely required for certain.
I, I'll call him tomorrow and get him verified and writing.
He'll be here Wednesday.
He'll be here Wednesday. Oh, yeah. I'll be here any minute. Well, I'll go ahead and talk tomorrow, ask him to verify it.
Well, no, I might not do that. I'll just let it go as it is because it's not in there now. You don't want to add it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't give him any ideas.
When you retire, you quit keeping up the data.
All right. Get back there, probably get. Any more, please? More questions, please, Mark? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that tonight or not?
Yes, it's about.
Yes, but it could be. Vote to sign the settlement, okay.
Well, would that just be the consent order?
You expect to approve that and authorize Gary to sign? And this isn't all of the documentation that's gonna-
There's gonna be more.
Yeah. This is just the-
Looking here.
Yeah, Gary.
Do I have to open my mic now?
I can hear you.
I need a motion to take action on the consent order for-
Make a motion.
The DEP.
I said.
Protection. And since, um, I have to remember together. Voted in second. Is there any questions? On the big scale. Motion, Gary. Number two is vote to approve homecoming parade route. I didn't see the route. I tried to find it.
It's the same that it is every year.
Why see it now?
I made a motion on the first.
Second.
I just needed the formality so I could finish following for the conference.
It's been approved in second. That the homecoming parade route has been approved. Are there any questions? Our favor is that I, I don't think, Gary. Number three, vote on temporary R for city.
There were three applications for clerk.
But she-
Uh, Ms. Vicki said that she would also be willing to apply for deputy clerk.
Okay. Is anybody else want to apply?
Candace Jennifer, would either of y'all be willing to also apply for deputy clerk?
Just be truthful. Financially, I probably need to drop a clerk.
I understand. Ms. Jennifer? I understand.
I, I have no problem with it. Either way, I'm gonna sign this way.
Okay. So you would be willing to also be in the ring for the deputy clerk position?
Obviously, my first one's a great, you know, but yes.
All righty. I'm gonna go first. Candace, if she was here first, I guess we'll take it.
What, you want to go first?
I don't know.
Now, the other two have to leave.
Y'all gonna interview them right now in front of everybody?
No, they're gonna walk out.
They have to walk out before we do her.
Good.
I mean, they don't, they don't have to because it's a public meeting. But we- They, I think they only have to go when you make the decision. That's how y'all did me when I had my interview.
Because I know usually only one person be in here.
Like me and Makanya were both in here while you were talking to them and then we had to go.
Well, anybody has any questions for Ms. Candace, our project, not Candace? You're gonna kill me. Kill me for saying that. I'm so sorry, Candace. I didn't mean this.
That's okay.
You know, I didn't mean this. But anybody have any questions for Candace? Jay?
I think, I think she'd be a good one because of the past stuff that she has involved in doing, uh, grants and the different things that she's done over the years, over time to help us perform. And with us breaking things back down into book books, I think I'll be a, a person with, with, I'll just- As far as having any questions, pretty much represented.
For you, everything of a candidate. Joey?
Uh, which I've worked with Candace, which everyone knows I'm candid Candace. So, uh, uh, I'm sorry. So we go way back, but anyway, back to the position. Uh, I was concerned I had, you know, uh, what Candace says, uh, she sat in Gary's position and, uh, I could tell as a person she got stressed out, but she had a long wait. She was doing a bell route, going to school, further education and all that and picking for her family and taking care of, uh, without problems. So I give her hats off to it. She's always looked after the city. Uh, Candace has been here a long time in the city with, uh, several of us. And she's always looked after, uh, people here in the city. It's good or bad. I don't know. Uh, you're stepping in that position as a, as a clerk or deputy clerk. As a person, uh, I think sometimes she'd be tender hearted, uh, very tender hearted. But, uh, far as the job, I think she'll do outstanding job. Uh, most thing I look at her resumes, uh, to, to the race of days that the three stands out uh, and for the position as clerk, in my, in my opinion. And, um, you know, counsel votes for Candace. I'm all, uh, staying in my booth. Well, she is candid, too. We've got three more. But, uh, but she'd make a good one, you know, uh. We need a good, the city has went through a couple here in the last, uh, uh, few months or five months. And, uh, needs someone to, most thing I, my concern is, is, uh, working Gary as a grant and you can give the grant as merit. Uh, that's what the city's lacking right now as a clerk, uh, and the budget. The big thing the city, uh, you know, any of y'all. Y'all get the job, you know, if you don't know how to work on the budget, now is the time to start for next year. So listen, counsel, I need some education. I need someone to come in to help. And that's the situation we just run into, uh, working on our budget. Uh, and that's part of the clerk's position. And, uh, but other than that, uh, I have no problem with Candace. So, but, uh, I'm glad we, we, well, I was a question I do got and I seen you put in for eighteen. I think clerk makes seventeen, I think.
I am not, I'm not sure. I wasn't.
Yeah, right now. I think the clerk is making seventeen. Yes, because the, um, Lee and them are still handling our table.
Are you willing to make seventeen instead of eighteen? I heard you put eighteen and, uh, that was another question. But other than that, I don't have.
Mr. Gary?
I called her today, uh, just, I don't have any problems. I don't have a vote or whatever.
I know you. If we got a new opinion.
I don't have any, not having any work with, you know. Really don't have a problem working with anybody.
Well, it's my turn now. She know I love her and I think she would be real good at this job. And I was just heartbroken when she decided not to be married.
I would say.
She know how heartbroken I was.
I would say.
When she decided that she didn't wanna be married. I mean, it just really broke my heart. And I think she has the city just really at heart. She's wanting to raise Dan Burner, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
I assume you were. And so she knows all the residents. The only thing is, and if she can't, gotta, I know sometimes your heart. I know what your heart is. And I know who your heart is of the people of Burnham. But you have to be, you know how you have to be. You have to, it's a job.
I know.
And they have to understand that it's a job that you have to do. And sometimes that job might be hard. Cause I've been there and a job is so hard sometimes, but you have to do what you have to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can't let, I want you to have heart, but you see, that's another thing. I want you to use your heart to be with the city of Burnham and where our residents. But, you know, you have to do your job when it comes. Sometimes things happen and you just have to put down a little bit. Don't be too harsh, but you know, say it in a nice way and let them know that we have rules and regulations that we have to follow.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's the only, I know how your heart, I know what your heart is. I know the kind of heart you have. And I have that same type of heart. Sometimes you just have to do what you have to do. That's all I have.
Can I say something? Well, first, thank y'all for just taking the time to talk to me about it. And, um, I'll be honest, I pray that if it's God's will, I'll get it. If it's not, I won't. Not upsetting the way. Still gonna love everybody up there. I don't have a, a problem with that because I just want it to be God's will. And as far as what Joey said too, there was multiple situations going on when that happened. And honestly, I hadn't been a doctor in like seven years until this and I had to go to the emergency room with my heart. But it's okay. Everything's good. Um, but I need to say that because I had no idea the situation was gonna come open, that there was gonna be a clerk position. I have a few things scheduled in the month of October that are already scheduled. It's like, put my business on YouTube, but a colonoscopy and a, uh, you know, just some things. And, um, I had, um, told Shauna that I would go with her on her trip and I really don't wanna tell her I don't wanna go. And that's like three days at the end of the month. So telling y'all that now so that if that's an issue, I completely understand that, but I wanna keep my commitments. And I appreciate your consideration.
Jennifer, for you?
How did you pronounce your last name?
Foyers. She's like Foyers, but with a P.
You got to not be wrong.
That's pretty good. That's actually the.
Jay?
Now, this for the deputy clerk or?
We just gonna, what we've got to do is just go ahead and just interview them all and then we'll make a choice. Cause they said they would take the deputy clerk or whatever. We're gonna make a choice. Just go ahead and do it. It's all the same thing.
Now, this first, did, did you're asking for twenty dollars an hour?
It's just a number. I had no idea, so.
Are you right now currently employed and doing the freelance business?
Freelance.
You not like the glass business?
I'm sorry?
Did you not like the glass?
No, I loved it actually.
I did too. I done it for twenty-five years.
I loved it.
Say the paperwork pretty much says it all.
So you actually have a lot of accounting experience then?
I think so.
Just about every aspect of running. Yeah, that looks good.
You know Jimmy Crowe?
I'm sorry?
Jimmy Crowe?
Yes sir, I do.
Good fellow.
Yes, very good.
I've rated him, I think he's very well qualified. Kind of self-explanatory here to me. Have you ever had any experience in working with grants?
Yes, I worked for the Department of Justice for a while, so I was on the opposite side of the grants, but yes.
I believe I included, um, an email where she talked about her grant work.
Yeah, you did, you did.
Sorry, I was trying to call you.
It was stuck, it was stuck.
I just wanted you to know.
Honestly, I did not see it, it was stuck together with that one there, so I have not read that.
The only thing that I saw that I kind of, it's longevity on the job, but you didn't stay on the job very long.
There have just been life situations here and there, of divorce, small children. But it's just a, a matter of life, I have been pretty much, a divorce, small children at the time, you know, things like that, so, but I'm pretty settled where I'm at now.
And so you still work at this freelance business?
I have freelance, yes ma'am.
Because I notice most of the jobs are like a year, a year and a half, and then you move on to something else. We looking for someone that can stay with us, something.
And that's, ultimately, that's, that's the goal, so.
I know, I know my opinion doesn't really count, but can I ask Ms. Candace something? Um, I noticed Jennifer and Ms. Becky, you both, you both had a, you're a nosy on your resume, um, Ms. Candace, are you one too?
I used to be, I let it go several years ago, but I can't get it back.
I, I've been getting, uh, several requests today for nosy services, if y'all, I've got one.
I have two weddings I have stuck.
Good job.
Anybody else have any other questions? To Jennifer. Okay, Ms. Becky House, how are you?
I'm good.
Haven't seen you in a while.
I know, it's been a while.
Been a while.
Every jury that, that were, did pass any grants.
Wish I did, I wish I knew that.
I want to let y'all know too, that Ms. Becky turned in her resume in a really pretty little book, embal- embalmed and everything, but I unfortunately had to dismantle it to get it through the copy machine. I'm sorry about that, Ms. Becky.
That's okay. They have a higher price though, so you know what you're doing. I'm just saying. That works with you.
Do you have any? You have?
So you would prefer to be the deputy clerk?
Yes ma'am.
So that's what you want us to consider you for?
Yes ma'am.
So she's gonna need a grant experience. Is that something she'll learn along the way?
She'll learn along the way.
Will make her work until seven o'clock in the night?
Okay, she'll learn to.
Until she learns it.
Okay, cool.
That's what it takes to get the job done.
Well, I'm glad you, I was gonna ask y'all anyway, so that's the situation we in now, you know. I can't fault anyone to leave, you know, the city, we've had turnovers and turnovers, but since we got three of y'all, and one of y'all share nothing really about the, the clerk's position, it makes a difference, you know, from seventeen to thirteen. I'll tell you what, she'd be making sure of what she made. But the thing is, we have such a big turnover, usually the deputy clerk, I'll state a deputy clerk, I'll step in the clerk's position, but we ain't found the right first head, that's why I'm getting to, to handle the clerk's position. And, uh, with that said, uh, I've read the resumes, all three of the resumes, uh, for a while, I've had three that not even matched, and just not one that stands out over the rest of them. But, uh, with that said, uh, you know, I wouldn't want to hire a clerk or deputy clerk, and you say, you know, not knowing that you, you know, put in for clerk position, and, uh, with that said, you know, if we hired you, uh, uh, you made two weeks quick, you know, the payment, you had the money, so since I know that, you know, that's a big plus. Yeah, it's hard, just any time, for a lot of people, for thirteen dollars a hour, county has the same position up there, uh, they can't get super high, you know, uh, for twelve. But anyway, with that said, uh, you got a good resume especially for the deputy clerk. And I hope, you know, whoever the council goes, I hope y'all work together, it's only getting women to work together, uh. Oh, I didn't, I didn't say.
Joey!
It's hard to get women to work together.
Boy, he's living hard there.
I can't break you later, that's the only man we've ever had.
Well, I have to be honest with you, it is.
He went to work with the council, and he had the clerk's position.
You're a nobody, Joey.
I gotta say, someone has got to put them in a place.
Oh my god!
But anyway, that's all.
You better put my hat on. That's all he gets to say.
Ladies, you'll only have to see Joey once or twice a month.
Gary?
I'm not Joey, I kind of will please with all the applications, uh, but somebody stepped, Ms. Howard stepped down to, to that job, we need somebody reliable in that position. The clerk, deputy clerk job, it just isn't important, just clerk job, very much so.
Now that decrease in the, uh, what you were expecting money wise, does that impact you at all, or are you okay with that?
Oh, money's not, I won't say it's not an issue, I won't say that, but.
But it's not your problem?
It's not my problem.
Okay.
Um, one plus is that you were, once you're through your three months, which you hit your ninety days, and your health insurance kicks in, the city pays for it, so that's helpful when you're, if you're accepting a thirteen dollar an hour salary rate, and state insurance, it's pretty good insurance.
Well, I met this girl, I met her this hour, at her little shop, and I just love going in there, and I know that she is so overly friendly. I met her, we just kept, I couldn't get, we, I could never get out of there because we just talked and talked and talked. And she is so sweet, she's such a sweet lady, and I really miss you when you left that little shop. I miss you so much, and then Ms. Rhonda told me, oh, I said, well, where is she, she said, she's in our house, I said, oh. I thought you had just gone out and did this all together, but Ms. Rhonda told me that you were going to do this in your house. So I'm still glad to hear that, so maybe one day I'll get a chance to still come over to your house. But I don't have any questions for her, because I know that she'll be kind and good to our residents, because she's so, upon meeting her, she, it wasn't a stranger, she was just so nice to me, so I really enjoyed talking to her.
I have one more thing to all of y'all, whoever, the council hires, uh, we don't know, just like the council, we ain't got the answer for everything, but y'all know something, deputy clerk, ask the clerk, clerk gonna know it, ask the council or attorney or whatever. You know, all it does is puts the city further behind and puts us in a bind with y'all, you know, when, when we don't meet a deadline or on a grant or whatever, uh, it happens all the time, but, you know, I know going to a new position, both positions is new to y'all, you gonna know the answer, just like when I first got hired up here, I hated this lady side of the world for a while, but anyway, she grew on me.
But, uh. I wouldn't let you spend money.
But anyway, uh, glad to have y'all, glad y'all put the applications in, uh, uh, for the position, and, uh, that's all I have.
Can we do have someone now, Candace, that wasn't here before you, when you was here, that's Lee. That's.
No, Lee, no, Lee was the accountant when I was here, he and I had a good working relationship.
Okay, I, I thought you had left before he came in.
They won't hear you.
No, no, he and I worked a lot together, tried to figure out.
Okay. Cause he's here on a kind of, uh, ongoing basis now to like oversee and come out and find us.
Right.
Straight, so, he is here, and that's a big help to you, starting, anybody that gets that job, it's a big help to them starting out. I just wanted to make you guys know, there is someone, and you can, you can ask him some questions that you may not know, and maybe he might be able to help you, you know, if you come up against something, just ask him, if he, if he knows he will, or he'll try and find out for you. So that's a big help.
Yes.
You know, and I'm glad that we do have him, because that is, is a big help to roll, avenues in a big job, so that's what I'm saying, he is being very good help, and that's because of the things for the city, I think.
Does classes, do they ever give classes, I think, can you tell it to y'all, can you tell me?
Yes ma'am.
That's okay, uh, I want to add, ask, I'll ask, uh, if they do just, y'all do decide to hire me, I have two appointments at the end of the month. I have an eye doctor's appointment, and I have a follow-up checkup on the thirty-first of the twenty-fifth. I will reschedule them if I need to, but I will eventually have to go to these.
You're not allowed to be sick on this job.
Well, I'm not sick, but my doctor says I have to get my eyes checked. And I will reschedule till later if I need to, but I, eventually I will have to go to these appointments.
Anything we can, whoever gets the classes or anything, more information shared is better off everybody, it's a lot better off of them.
Yeah, I got one more question, um, then this goes through for all of us. Uh, how soon can you start whenever you get, uh, because we're just gonna be in a situation where we don't have anybody now?
Well, and I did want to mention, I don't know if you read all the way through my, my letter here, um, my last full day is gonna have to be the fourteenth, but my new position is a, has, is an evening schedule, so I, I can do some part-time coverage, help maintenance through the first billing, whatever, to help the girls get off to a good start, to make sure the office is open for some portion of the day, no matter what, because there are certain things that do need to be done every single day, um, the online payments, for instance, you only get one chance to download those. Cause I, I don't want my decision to negatively affect the city of Burner. So I'm available for a little while, like I don't necessarily want to do it forever, but I want to help who's ever coming behind me get off to a good start. Cause some of this, some of the stuff I do is complicated, and it's not really no way to tell you how to do it unless we are literally doing it.
That's really nice of you.
I have my moments.
I can start any time, tomorrow if you want me to.
We will not be here tomorrow despite the area thinking that we are a busy day.
I'm gonna show up.
You will be alone, and you're not, not what I want.
I think Joey will be just supposed to work all the time.
Um, I'm not sure if the city hall takes Monday holiday, because Monday's a holiday.
I will be here, where, where I will.
I don't think that's a holiday for us.
It's a basic joke, it's still taking it, but it's not on our list, it's in the handbook.
Yeah, it's just a federal day. Well, I, I can start because of the echocardiogram and stuff, that, it would be like lunchtime Tuesday would work, so. Not available.
Okay.
If you ladies can step out for a minute, it's gonna be great.
Don't be trying to listen to you.
That's serious.
Well, that's right, deputy clerk, I think, uh, Becky, uh, they were, they were, you gotta worry about her, she never do it. Here for face, uh, the resume, the resume stands out for.
A clerk? For clerk, or I, I actually look at that.
I would better do my clerk position, but it's all on, can't make a take it, so, but anyway, she's been a good, good deputy clerk.
I agree with you.
Chad?
If, if y'all are interested, Ms. Becky wanted y'all to know that her opinion was, um, Candace clerk or Ms. Becky for deputy clerk.
Becky for deputy?
Yes, you, you know she could be.
She's had a lot of jobs, she's qualified.
Who? Becky.
It's Jennifer, she's had a lot of jobs.
Yeah, that, that's kind of scary.
That's scary because she has, that's scary to me, when people turn over like that.
Her qualifications.
I know her qualifications. But, when I see people that's a real kid, and, I, I've been, I've hired before, but I've always looked at that, you know, where you don't stay on job. See, a lot of people think they come to a job and they can put down all these places they work, that's a good thing, but it's not. That's really a hindrance, which you know that, that I call, that shows that you don't stay on job, you know, that's, I look at that, you, you stay here a year, you stay there a year and a half.
What's make you think you're gonna stay here long?
Tell me you have an idea, I don't know what you want to do, ma'am, let you know how.
Two years is longer than staying like.
Y'all, so how many, three, right? Two, two years, see, I would get it right away.
Well, the thing is, y'all know what, we know what cities putting here, don't matter who we put in that office, they, uh, it ain't gonna be an easy road, and with that said, we all know Candace, even though she's Candace, she's born and raised here in the city. Education wise, she's got some, like, uh, job, that's what I'm saying, uh, clerk resume, but the thing is, uh, Candace is hard, like Esther said, in the city, same was that, but, I want the council to understand, if Candace can't do that job, Chad just will just survive it to replace, what's that?
It was a temporary hire anyway.
We're not gonna do temporary hiring, it was supposed to be that, but we don't have time, we don't have time, you know, this has to be a job that needs to come in there.
Becky went to school here too.
I know, Becky went to school here in Burner. And she, she, I mean, I looked at her resume, you know. I mean, she, she, I mean, I looked at her resume, you know, but she said she would take that. But I did look at her resume there, I'm thinking, I looked at it very, very hard because she.
Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Jason a question, can, can you work with both of those ladies?
You better.
I definitely work. I definitely work for Candace.
Well, and the people here, they all know her, and I guess too, like I said, the only thing she, she's got, she came at her heart of blue ahead, that's the only thing, you cannot do that, and I understand her, you know, being like that. Sometimes it hurts more, it hurts you more than it do that person, I'm serious.
One time I would say, she didn't take that for a day.
No, she didn't at all.
I love that.
Found nowhere like that.
So are we in a group?
Yeah.
What's up, y'all?
Is it? Are you gonna be mad, will you upset?
I feel one. We know we'll agree.
Cause I'm holding the grudge off that thing on the morning maybe we walk.
I'm a mother, I'll hold it right now.
I ain't taking nothing from y'all.
Joey, you're young.
Bring me those sweets, Miss Rhonda.
Y'all don't have to worry about it, I'm gonna beat him up.
I think it should be all the women up there.
We'll just bury him.
And Chad.
And Chad.
We'll put in a phone call to his wife.
All right, so how, how do y'all wanna do this? Do y'all usually like make a motion, or does everybody say what they think, or?
When she sends people a question?
Do y'all, does somebody usually make a motion, or do you, okay?
Well, I make, I make a motion, we hire Ricky Howard.
Just do one at a time, um, now.
All right, who's clerk?
Yes, deputy clerk.
A deputy clerk.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I make a motion for Ricky Howard to be at the session.
Deputy clerk?
Do, do we have to bring them in before we do that?
No.
I mean, it's a public meeting, so they, they have a right to stay here.
No, we're gonna do one at a time.
So you do include the rate of pay when you got hired.
The rate of pay.
You mean include the rate of pay in your mission.
Come back in. Was it seventeen?
The deputy clerk is certain, something that happens. I, I'm with you on that, I know that. All the Chad, make him all juicy.
Mary?
David. Wait, other than he.
Yeah, he's doing good.
Okay, good. We haven't finished yet.
Did him being put asleep back there? I'm glad he's doing good now.
Doing good.
What about Mary? But she not with y'all, is she?
She won't come back.
So ready, we're gonna do deputy clerk first, I made the motion, we hire Miss Becky Howard Owens for deputy clerk, at a pay of thirteen dollars an hour.
It's been, uh, second, that Becky Howard, Miss Becky Howard, I forgot your Becky.
You just call me.
Miss Becky Howard will be, uh, deputy clerk at thirteen dollars an hour.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you just say anything? We're all in your question, is there any question? All they say is yeah. Second. So Miss Becky Howard at thirteen dollars an hour, which I knew. She's deputy clerk. Too late.
That time don't need to be here Monday.
Eight.
Okay, thank you.
She's starting Monday.
And they have a research divided with your boss.
Okay.
Now we'll just make. Clerk for the city.
An hour or thirty minutes?
Seventeen dollars an hour. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion if that's all Candace, I just, deputy clerk, for the city of Vermont.
The rate of pay.
Seventeen.
Seventeen dollars an hour.
Is there any question? I would say is yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm a little.
So you have three. We have enough, so Miss Candace.
Thank you.
Hire you as deputy clerk, now we can use yours.
Thank you.
We can use yours.
Tuesday about lunch, because I've got those tests. I did, yeah, but Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. I've got it, we're actually, and if I need to cancel, I'm calling, but, cause I didn't know about all this, I told my daughter I'd come see her in Savannah Sunday afternoon, so I'm gonna come home Monday night so I can do the echo on Tuesday.
Then, if anybody cares what I think, it might obviously be easier to study all a little bit.
I thought that as well.
You asked for that, I don't see, why don't you make it wait?
I can, but I did ask him, I, I called and talked to him at the cardiologist, and I've got the echo at eight-thirty and the stress test at nine-thirty, so she told me I could be out by eleven, and it's an hour drive, so I figured I could be here by noon if I'm, if it worked out that I was hired. But I can start Wednesday, whatever the council wants.
No, I just don't want you to be sleepy and stuff.
No, I should be fine, I might be huffing and huffing.
She never sleeps.
Wait, is there anything else? Somebody there? Michelle, you have anything?
I know, I was getting her that complex form.
Oh, I have one more thing, therefore I was gonna ask you this question. I'm sorry, she was showing me a form that Joey has to fill out. Um, just because I've got y'all here, I can go ahead and get this out of the way, so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Um, we had a customer that came in and paid for a water and a sewer tap, it turned out he did not need the water tap, and I just wanna repeat, refund the money that we owed him back, that's all.
You got the water tap?
There was actually a water line there with a meter, so yeah, he didn't need the water tap, once Jason got out there. So I just wanna give him that part back.
Okay.
Is that good? Awesome, toss.
Anything else? Need a motion to adjourn?